Call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting at the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Real Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First item is public comment. Anyone wish to address the council? None? Hearing none. Next, we have closed session. I'll turn it over to our attorney.
Thank you Mayor Protem Cabralis. In addition to the regular meeting, I want to point out we have a notice and call of a special closed session meeting as well at the same time that is pursuant to discuss anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9. The information related to that litigation is set forth. It actually is on the ongoing grand jury litigation. In addition to that, for the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, we have property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. For the Victor Redevelopment Agency, we also have property negotiations under 54956.8. And under the City Council, we have a companion item to, I believe it is to item number three on the Redevelopment Agency, that is also real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. The properties and the designated negotiators are all set forth on the agenda. In addition to that, we have existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9A pertaining to City of Victorville versus Eagle. We have litigation item number six pursuant to government code 54956.9A, ongoing litigation, City of Victorville versus Porter. Again, case number is set forth on the agenda. We have item number seven, which is again existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9A. And there it is, the City of Victorville versus I-15 slash Victorville LLC. And lastly, we have, actually second to last, we have another piece of existing litigation, City of Victorville versus Nunez. Again, pursuant to government code 54956.9A. And lastly, we have closed session under government code 54957B, Public Employment, pertaining to the city manager. To the extent there is any reportable action, we will report such action either as the conclusion of the closed session or prior to the commencement of the regular session at seven o'clock. Followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Chief, or Acting Police, Chief Lou Lindbalt.
I believe the microphones are working now. So bow your hearts and heads with me as we come to the Lord in prayer. Father God, we thank you for this wonderful community that we live in and reside in. And it is an honor to come and stand with our elected officials and those who are in the room tonight to, first of all, bring glory to you and thank you for what happened some 2,000 years ago on this Easter week. Our hearts and minds are reminded of that even as we come to these proceedings tonight. And I ask, Lord, would you just bless not only this evening and everything that happens this evening, but I pray that you would continue to bless this wonderful, awesome community that we all live in. Bless our leaders as they lead us well. And would you give them wisdom and clarity and direction as they lead this community? In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for we stand one nation, undebowe, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Good evening. As has been the tradition of the City Council, we like to honor those that are serving our community and us overseas fighting for our freedom. And tonight, we are saluting the family of Frank Figueroa. And I'm not sure who exactly is here tonight, with his wife is here tonight. If I could have her come forward to accept this certificate. As you all can see over here, this banner will fly on one of our light standards on the streets of Victorville while he's deployed. And once he does come back, we will take it down and present it to him. But while, while he's gone, it'll fly. So I'm going to present you with the certificate. We could get a picture with you and your son.
Me and my husband Frank Ewee are high school sweethearts. We met in the 10th grade. And he always told me the first time he saw me in PE. We went to Victor Valley High. We grew up here. We were born at St. Mary's. And we bought our first house last year, just off Mojave and Alibato. We have two beautiful kids, Elias and Edie. She's back there. Edie, she has a genetic disease called tuberous sclerosis. It's very hard when she got diagnosed, my husband, we were in Virginia, and he was getting deployed for 15 months. And we found out two weeks before he left. So it was very, very hard. He's a great guy. He's an amazing soldier. All the sergeants love him. They never have anything bad to say. I really remember they're not allowed to say. He's a great father. He's always been there for his kids, you know, his sergeants let him come off for a day of school, everything. He's always been there. And he's got a great family to back him up, great parents, you know, great brothers and sisters. His brother is also in the Army. He's stationed in Fort Irwin. I don't think he could make it. I think he was in the field today, so. Do you want to say anything about your dad?
Uh, my dad, uh... I love my dad.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. All right, we have a special presentation from the Redevelopment Agency to the council on the California Redevelopment Association Award. And I don't know who, Mr. Metzger, are you here to present that to the council? Do we get an Oscar or what is this?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you all are very well of the history, but I'll share a little bit of it with the audience just for background purposes. But we've been involved in the redevelopment of the former George Air Force Base for over 20 years now. And even from day one, we knew it was going to be a challenge. It's even a challenge still today. But over the years, through the years of fight, through the years of litigation, through the years of creating a vision, to the years of actually trying to implement a vision to redevelop George Air Force Base into what it's become and what it's becoming is a job generating economic development engine for the entire Victor Valley. And despite all the trials, tribulations, we've made some very substantial achievements over the years. The most notable achievement involves having attracted the Dr. Pepper Snapple Project out at SCLA. And since I've been involved with SCLA, and it's more and more amazing that every time I talk to people, and people haven't even visited it, the facility. So I certainly encourage it. You'll certainly know what Dr. Pepper is because they've got giant signs on the building that say who they are. But we've had some very tremendous aviation successes over the years in attracting nationally recognized companies, creating jobs locally. The Dr. Pepper Plant represents new manufacturing, substantial investment, $120 million worth of plant investment. The last job count that I had when I last visited them was 220 jobs. So they've actually exceeded projections. But the investments that we've made, which have been substantial in terms of infrastructure development to just encourage these types of private investments, have been significant, but they wouldn't have been done without the existence of Redevelopment Agency. We've seen and heard a lot of discussion over the last several months as to the Governor's proposal to eliminate redevelopment. That would be certainly traumatic for a city like Victorville because we would not be able to invest in infrastructure to position ourselves for job creation. We have, just on March 30th of this year, we got recognized by the California Redevelopment Association for our role as a redevelopment agency in attracting the Dr. Pepper Plant to Victorville. Had it not been for redevelopment, this project would be outside the state of California and certainly of no value to your local residents. But the award is among the most prestigious awards in my profession as a redevelopment practitioner. California Redevelopment Association represents all the redevelopment agencies up and down the state of California. So with that, they presented us this award, and it wasn't fair for myself and Sean McGlade and Sophie to be the only ones that took the credit for receiving this award. Many people are involved, including council members and including policymakers such as yourself. So with that, I wanted to take this opportunity to present to you this award, which kind of looks like an Oscar. And this is an award that we wanted the council to be able to display. We also had a little piece put together that kind of gives the background and the history as to what went into the project. And we're hoping that that gets displayed somewhere prominently in City Hall for the rest of the public to see. But I wanted to share that with you because it's a very important prestigious honor recognizing your role along with all the various staff that was involved in the project as well. Thank you.
All right, now we have some certificates of recognition for our youth advisory committee members for 2010, 2011 fiscal year. I know I have two students here, and so there might be more. Oh, we have all of them? Veronica's here as well. Okay, so three. So if I could have CJ Heinz come up? Paige Foster and Veronica Christensen. If you all could come up, let's give them a round of applause. Okay, and I understand you have a special presentation to make as well.
Can I have the representatives for the police explorers come up? As the youth advisory committee, we and my fellow, I am a fellow committee member, Paige and Veronica, would like to present this check to the police explorers. We had an extremely successful talent showcase go on two Saturdays ago. It was just an honor for them to let us support them, and I would like to thank them personally for letting us help you with this. And thank you for all of you who came and attended.
Thank you.
As a committee, we also would like to thank the Bears for supporting us because they helped. Also Larry and Jean Hoover and Val Emick and Robin Buckles, they had an immense contribution to this event. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. All right, I understand that Felix Diaz would like to make a special presentation to the city.
We are members of the American JF41 Education Foundation, and our treasurer, Cherie Lopez, is going to make a presentation of $500 to the city for the banner program.
Thank you so much. We greatly appreciate that contribution. This helps sustain our program that we have going on in the City of Victorville. Do you want to say a few words?
As probably most of you know, the Old Town Victorville Veterans Memorial is property of the City of Victorville, belongs to Victorville, doesn't belong to anybody else, belongs to the City of Victorville, it's on their property. And I'm going to present this DVD that I made out of the original video of the presentation, the parade, et cetera, that we had in 1996. And I know a lot of you weren't even born there. But anyway, we had a video made, how it was poured, how it was done and everything in hysteria. So I have the original, and I'm going to give you a copy and put it in your archives, whatever you'd like to do with it.
Well, I'll watch you back. I'll let you know that as most of you know, Felix Diaz was a council member on this City Council for a number of years. And if it wasn't for Felix's direct efforts, that statue would not be down there today, regardless of whose property it is. He was the one man army that got it done. And I am so proud of that statue. And I go down there with pride, and Felix is the one that did all the works. But I'm sitting down there just as proud as punch every time we hold a ceremony down there every year. So Felix, again, thank you.
Thank you for all that. And I just have a little special recognition. It's kind of more personal than anything else. But tonight in the audience, my parents are here, but more importantly, we have here with us a foreign exchange student from the country of Sweden, Julia, who's staying with my sister and brother-in-law and her friend Matilda. And they were just so interested in seeing what local government was about in the United States, they wanted to come to the City Council meeting tonight. So welcome and thank you for being here. All right, so now we will move into public comment for all agencies under the City of Victorville. The first card I have is Martha Brody. Martha?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Martha Brody. You have my address in front of you, Mr. Mayor, and I do live in the City of Victorville. Earlier today, I attended your first budget workshop here in City Hall. And I went away really, really emotionally disturbed when I left here at 4:30. Mr. Rothschild, I direct this to you. I, Mr. Mayor, told you months ago, I would stand behind you, and to this day, I do, all of you. I want to see you work as a group. Mr. Rothschild, I'm ashamed of what you said today, and I will tell you why. Sid Holquist stood up here and gave you figures and numbers for our fire department in this city, and it was a million dollars less than what for next year, than what it currently is today. I have a son-in-law who works for the San Bernardino County Fire Department, who last Thursday voted, along with all of his other firefighters, to take a 7% cut in pay effective July 1st, so none of them would lose their jobs. And you sat here today and said in front of all of us that you want to see where you can wiggle more money out of our fire department. That's a crime, and I'm going to tell you why. And yes, I'm sorry, I'm emotional. Last Tuesday night at 8:30, I was on a flight to Omaha, Nebraska. And when I landed at 10:30 at night, I got the worst nightmare a daughter could get. I had a message from my sister to call home. My mother had collapsed at home. They live in the City of Astoria, that county fire, that station 302. When they got to my mother and father's house, my brother had started CPR on my 82-year-old mother. And if it wasn't for those firemen, my mother may not be with me today. And you have the audacity to sit here and want to wiggle money out of our county fire department? You ought to be ashamed of yourself. My son-in-law has a wife, who is my daughter, who has a master's degree in education and can't find a job in teaching in this high desert. And they are raising my seven-year-old granddaughter, and he just took a 7% cut in pay. They own a home here, they live here. Nathan was raised here, born in Victor Valley Hospital. You were his teacher, and you want to take these jobs away from our guys? It's insane. I support each and every one of you. You cannot, and I mean cannot, take money away from our firefighters and our police department. I want to know that when I need the fire department, they're going to be at my house. Those firemen in Astoria were at my mother's home in three minutes last Tuesday night. You keep that in mind as you go through this process, Mr. Rothschild, because I will tell you, I'm Martha Brody, I live in this city, and I will fight you to the end on this issue with our fire department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dorothy Miller?
Dorothy Miller, while I was here this afternoon too, and I was very disturbed of what I heard. The fire department and the police department has done everything they can to cut back as far as they can. You want more police officers. You want, you want. What are you going to get? Nothing. It's absolutely ridiculous when you sit up there and say, "We need more police officers. Let's get rid of the captain." Wait a minute. Something's wrong here. Somebody has to run the group. And then I had a little conversation with the mayor. I mentioned to him about this going on. And he got up and he left pretty angry when I said I was going to get up and speak about it tonight. He really got angry with me, and I really don't care because I feel both police and those firemen do everything for this city, and they don't need to be cut. Every one of you who's sitting up there can cut your bonuses and all the money you get for your sitting up there, working for the people. No, it don't work that way. And then to go after the attorney, I am so sick of hearing that every single meeting about the attorney. The attorney has done what he had to do to get this city back on track. It's completely out of control. And until we get it under control, we're going to keep having problems. And we got one that sits there, and all she wants, number one, we want more police, we want more police, we want to get rid of the attorney. Look, you all work together. You're all working for all the people, not just yourselves. You're working for the whole city. Now let's get it together, and let's work for the whole city and not cut police and fire. We need them, we need our captain, and you need to really figure out where we can get the money. All of you, give us yours. Let's see how far it goes. I bet it don't go anywhere. Thank you.
Nora Miller?
Mayor, council members, I just wanted to mention tonight that there's a new website out there. It's called savevictorville.org. It's up there to separate fact from fiction, and anybody can get on the website. It's open to everybody, and you can leave a reply or make a comment, as long as it's true, it's a fact. They will check that out to be sure. It's called savevictorville.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Raphael Porres?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I'm coming here in front of you guys. Mr. Byers, we elected you back in November. Okay? We elected to serve the City of Victorville, not the town of Apo Valley. I think the party's over. I give you one more month. See you not change your cell and try to serve the City of Victorville, and he call you. I got the money, I got the people. I need full support for the city manager, full support for the police department, and full support for the fire department. That's my word. Thank you.
Honesty Wormley?
Good evening, City Council. I come before you to use your powers that can be. I would like to recommend that you... I would like to recommend that you look at what's happening at the other end of the building and create new business and new jobs. You spent multi-millions on Dr. Pepper. If you put twenty small businesses in, you've got two hundred and twenty employees, it'll cost you nothing. When someone comes into the city to buy my property or anybody's property, they come down to the city, they leave in a hurry. The, the stipulations that this city is putting on the new business and the new growth is killing us. This is a sales tax city. I was here two years ago in front of this second mayor back. I had a gentleman here that wanted to move from Mariposa to Pendale Road. He had a sales tax check in his hand canceled from the state for twenty-nine thousand dollars. And I told the council that they're going to lose this guy if they don't give him a permit. The city said that he couldn't sell statuary on a car lot. What in the name of God difference did it make? There's got to be something done because he's in Arizona and the city's out twenty-nine thousand this year. You can't, you've got to let the small businessman in. The small businessman was the backbone of this nation and this city for, when I come here thirty-five years ago, this was a great little town and the little businesses were supporting it. I have got in this briefcase and I'd be glad to show it to you and I challenge everybody to ask me about it on this council. There's seventeen businesses that this city has put out in the last ten years. We spent thirty-five thousand dollars to get annexed into the city as commercial. The last mayor that was here did not know that Pendale Road was part of Victorville. This could go on forever. I could go on for hours. I've been fighting this for ten years. I gave up and I apologized to the city for trying to do anything and collect sales tax and be a good citizen, but I rescind that letter that I wrote because that's not the right way. I, it's, this is, there's got to be something done. You know, they keep talking about that base, but as I say, anybody that's got a third grade education can see that if you put twenty businesses in, in the businesses are the ones that take the chance. No one else supports them. They go on their own, the capitalist system. The city is going over there and building these buildings for two hundred and twenty jobs and we're not producing tax or sales tax and this is a sales tax city. There's something wrong and I challenge any of you to open this briefcase. You will not believe the business has gone out. Do you know fifteen hundred businesses moved to Texas last year out of California?
Honesty, we can get into a debate about what's gone on in the state, but the three minutes are up.
Yeah, I, I figured that.
Now, the three min- minutes are up. Chuck Hanson?
You're going to talk millions in three minutes.
Honesty, please sit down.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Chuck Hanson. I live at two-two-one-one-three Suhura Road and I'm here to bring good news. It seems like the years go by awful fast because next month is National Bike Month and we always have a kickoff ride the first Monday of May. And last year we had the mayor of Astoria and the mayor of, uh, Apple Valley and I would like to see everybody here. So, so far, the only, last year is the only one I've ever seen on a bike is Mike and I'd like to see everybody else. And, uh, you'll, you'll see the themes of the people that do it. It's a short ride, there's, uh, beginning riders, there's hardcore riders and the enthusiasm. So, it, it's May second, I give the prize to the lady at the end here and maybe she's passing out to you. And there'll be refreshments at the end, in, I, I hope to see it, May second.
What's a short ride?
It's six miles.
Oh. That's a sixty by a hundred.
Well, we had a seven-year-old girl do it last year and we had police protection. We hadn't got a valid road, but in the pack, it's simple and just one.
You supplied me with a bicycle last time, Mr. Hanson. Are you going to supply a bicy- another four thousand dollar bicycle? That scared me more than the ri- bike ride, riding a four thousand dollar bike that didn't, didn't belong to me.
Well, it shouldn't scare you because my wife made the mistake, I had it on the top of the van and she tried to drive in the garage and it didn't fit.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Okay, thank you. See you.
Ted Stocker? Juan Linares?
I'll like to say that my comments and opinions are based on what I personally see and hear, not on what I read or overhear. The council has said that the city is in a financial mess, and you heard that tonight, with a budget deficit and possible further layoffs. Yet no one has asked nor questioned the obvious issue of the amount of money that is being paid for salary and services, except for one council member. It took me about ten minutes to review and note that the request from the city manager for salary payments for pay period February nineteenth to March fourth was a two-point-nine-eight percent increase over the last pay request. No questions or discussions. She just paid it. This request for pay period March fifth to March eighteenth is two-point-zero-one percent or seventeen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars over the previous. What is confusing to me is that the agenda documents that is put together by the, uh, city manager, there's no justification, no fiscal impact, no analysis, no explanation for the increase, even though in the request there is a payment to an employee, one zero two four, for forty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That same employee received two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars the previous pay period. I am more confused when I see that the total increase is two-point-zero-one percent, yet this one payment is one thousand, four hundred and thirty-six percent of an increase. How is that possible? My analysis is that salaries were decreased the majority to make up for the increases to this one employee. Of course, I'm at a disadvantage because I do not have a mathematics degree like some council members, nor work for a CPA firm, but I do have a degree in common sense and it doesn't add up. How do you lay off over two hundred employees and the salary increases by four-point-ninety-nine percent? If you attempt to tell me that it has been budgeted, I will say no. Even the previous pay periods that I did not review were below. Just because it was budgeted is not an excuse to spend it. I think that the statement in the agenda item that reads in part that said claims or demands are accurate and the funds are available for payments thereof should be removed because you don't have the funds and it's not accurate. Council members should ask the city manager to provide at all council meetings a reason, not an excuse, when there is any increase in the budget and what is being done in other areas to control and reduce expenditures and not wait for G-Day to hear that there is no money and people have to be laid off. For example, when you heard the audit, everybody wasn't odd, everybody, "Oh, my God, this is a wake-up call." No, it wasn't. You've had that wake-up call many times and this is one of them. If the council members are not going to ask questions or question the budget or the city manager, then maybe they should seriously consider stepping down. Thank you.
All right, that is the, uh, end of the comment, uh, public comment cards that I have. Is anyone else wishing to address the council on anything that has not been agendas? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and move on to our, uh, agen- further into our agenda. Are there any revisions to the agenda?
There are no revisions to any of the agendas.
Okay. Uh, I would ask that the council and its respective, uh, boards and authorities consider all consent calendars at one time.
This includes the city council consent?
Yes, unless you wish to pull an agenda, uh, or an item off of that consent.
I just have a comment. I just would like the public to know that once again, we're paying, um, the city attorney a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
There's a motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Okay, well, now moving to public hearings under the city council agenda. Uh, agenda item number eighteen, public hearing regarding code amendment of PLN ten dash zero 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 two seven, and, uh, this is a request for a continuance, however, it's a public hearing, so I'll open a public hearing on agenda item eighteen. Anyone wishing to address the city council on agenda item number eighteen? Seeing no one, uh, is there a specific date or?
May third is the date that has been requested for continuance.
So this will be continued to May third. Moving on to agenda item number nineteen, again, a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against amending the Victorville Municipal Code pertaining to the inspection and grading of food facilities and the introduction ordinance number two-two-seven-four. Uh, at this time, we will open the public hearing on agenda item number nineteen. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, uh, the introduction of this ordinance? Anyone?
The, the idea is just simply ask the restaurants to put the letter grade in the window, uh, our city doesn't, so, uh, uh, would you like to know when there is an "ay" there? And we, and my wife and I have actually turned around and walked away when we've seen a restaurant that didn't have one or couldn't produce it. And so I thought with all the other cities in the county doing that, we might as well do it too, so that's what it's about.
Anyone wishing? All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and have a city clerk to read the ordinance.
Ordinance number twenty-two seventy-four, an ordinance of the city of Victorville amending section six-point-one-two-point-one-four-oh of the municipal code regarding the inspection, grading and posting of restaurants and food facilities, city of Victorville.
Move for introduction.
And would that motion include waiving for the reading as well?
And waiving the reading.
Yep. Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, agenda item number ti- twenty is a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against the annexation and engineer's report for track number one-seven-seven-zero-one. And this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing on agenda item number twenty. Anyone wishing to address the council for or against agenda item number twenty? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and return to the council.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis, to adopt resolutions number eleven dash zero zero nine and eleven dash zero one zero. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we've already dealt with the consent calendar, so moving on to agenda item number twenty-two. Uh, this is under written communications, uh, request to one, enter into a lien agreement with Akon Investment Company LLC as security for the improvements required by section seventeen point six-four point zero six zero, uh, D subsection two of the Victorville Municipal Code for track one-four-six-two-seven and two, release the existing bonds for track one-four-two, uh, sixty-seven on recreation of the lien agreement.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
I would recommend on item number twenty-three that Councilmember Vias recuse herself to avoid any even appearance of conflict.
All right, agenda item number twenty-three is a request for city to A, install sewer lateral to property line, or B, variance from the requirement for one-two-eight-zero-seven Amethyst Road to connect to the public sewer system, or C, require full connection, uh, to that sewer system. Thoughts?
Mr. President, you wish to sound.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, once again, we have an item before you, uh, requesting a variance from the city ordinance that requires that upon a failure of a septic system and sewers available within two hundred feet, that the property owner shall connect to the sewer. In this case, the, um, the applicant, or the appellant, if you will, um, is, uh, attempting to reach a compromise with the city. So if the city puts in the sewer lateral, um, he'd be more than willing to connect to the sewer system by running, um, the sewer connection from the home to the lateral, which would terminate at the right-of-way line and pay the fees, uh, for the connection. With that, um, any questions?
How is this similar or dissimilar from these similar issues we've covered in the last two or three meetings?
Um, there, there's been a variety of scenarios, um, going back, you know, maybe six months or so, there was, um, a, a case where the, there was a septic failure. Um, the cost to connect to the sewer entailed that the property owner had to get out and into the street and go across a busy street. Um, the, the cost for a contractor to come in and do that is fairly high because of the traffic control involved and, um, under those circumstances, the city council granted the variance, uh, due to the high cost and the, uh, burden on the property owner. Um, a more recent one was, um, where the lateral was actually installed to the property line. Um, the septic system failed and again, the property owner was asking for, um, some, uh, level of a variance to the code requirement to connect to the sewer.
On who? Who had put in that lateral?
The city had put in that lateral, the one on, on Baltimore was the, uh, the one I'm citing.
Who put in the one where we crossed the road?
The, um, there was no lateral to the property owner. They had to, um, extend main line, uh, to bring it to the, their property from its nearest location. It was within a hundred and, sorry, it was, it was within two hundred feet, um, but in that case, the variance was granted, so they didn't actually do that. They were allowed to, um, put in a, a, a second septic system.
And the reason for, the reason for that was the, uh, the, the main sewer line was too far away from, uh, or?
Well, it wasn't too far away, they, it was within the two hundred foot criteria, but it was on the other side of the street where to, um, make the sewer, um, main line extension, they had to cross a, a, a busy street.
And, and the most recent one we did was the lateral was there.
Yes, there was no need for the property owner to get out into the public right-of-way. It was just the, simply the cost of, uh, running a, um, uh, sewer pipe to connect to the sewer lateral from the home. And i- in that case, the, uh, the city allowed, um, the, uh, an agreement to be entered into to, um, make payments, if you will.
This one?
This one, um, we, we've indicated that there would be a cost to the city to provide the lateral. Um, if the, if the council decides that that is something that they want to do, uh, be aware that there will be a lot more requests for, um, the, the city to bring the lateral to the property line from whatever main line is available. The, the sewers that are in the city streets, there's a vast majority have been installed by developers. When they put the main line in, it may be going past, um, existing homes. They're not required to put laterals into each home. Um, the city's more in the business of putting in front-line sewers, or, uh, another good example, um, would be on the Squally Road. We completely rebuilt that road. We put the main line in and, uh, put laterals to each property owner because there was a consensus from the property owners that they would be willing to connect to it. Plus, we did not want to have many, many property owners out, uh, in the middle of the Squally Road right after we built it, digging it up to connect to a sewer line. It just makes sense to do it that way, but that's more defection than the rule.
Okay, Sean, if you could, uh, stand by, I do have a card, uh, from Stephen Ryan, I assume that's you, so if you wanted to come up and testify before the council?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, the, the cost, uh, to connect to the lateral, if it had been installed, would be with the, uh, city fees, uh, um, the fixture fees and everything. We're looking at about fifty-five hundred dollars. I can handle that. To go out to the middle of Amethyst Road or past to, for us to install the lateral, we're looking at about nineteen thousand dollars. And, you know, uh, that's a big chunk to bite off, especially, uh, our, our home right now, you know, we bought it new in nineteen eighty-six. Um, the value of, of the property there has dropped so much, I mean, that's like probably a quarter of the value of our whole, you know, of the property. Um, so i- i- if, if we would be allowed to, uh, if the, if the city would provide that lateral, I'd be more than happy to, you know, pay the fees, uh, you know, tap into the sewer, that'd be great. Uh, if not, I'd, I'd like to be able to, uh, to have a, a new leach pit installed, you know, if you would grant me the variance. Uh, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, so it's before the council, what's your pleasure? We have three options in front of us. Uh, is there any further question or discussion?
I don't know what concerns me more, the, the, buying thousands of laterals or granting thousands of variances. It, it almost seems like... It's number one. I, I would, for the sake of the policy that I think is legitimate and good, and I, I respect the concerns of the increased cost, I, I do, that sounds like an extraordinary jump from five thousand to get to the side of the road to fourteen thousand, uh, additional monies, uh, but the policy's better and a good one, and one of the reasons why, uh, we're fully sewed now, and the other communities are fighting that uphill battle to get their communities one by one sewed, so I would move that we, uh, continue the policy, and, and, uh, item number C would be what, would be my motion, require the full connection. That would be my motion.
Well, we, we established some sort of precedent during the last one, where we agreed to do this cost sharing, uh, with the last one, so maybe that might work on, I, you know, you'd have to, uh...
Just do a substitute motion if you want to do one of the other two. If you didn't want C, I mean, if you wanted to do, I think there's a partial one and a full one. I mean, waive it, leach pit, uh, partial one, I, I don't know what a partial one means, the side of the road, and then, or the full connection. That would be, I think, the three options, I think. So I'm, my, my motion is for him to require to pay the full connection fee. That would be my motion. If somebody wants to change that, then just say, I, I want to do an amendment and go and pick one of the others. Or a second mine.
Okay, well, I don't want to get in a Senate type of a discussion. Um, Mr. McGlade, you can maybe address that for the council. Apparently, there's some, uh, need for the council to understand, based on what we've done previously, could we potentially offer the same sort of, uh, solution to this property owner? No?
It wasn't the same thing, we didn't offer to pay for part of the installation.
No, but that, that, what we came up with before was some sort of payment plan?
Yeah.
Down on that, and that's not even before us tonight. That I'm aware of.
But you, but they're still paying the full cost. But it's, yeah, it's the full cost proposal, we could talk about a payment plan. We could also let that motion die and talk about a variance.
Well, there is, there has been no second to Councilman Rothschild's motion, so, uh, is there another motion on the table?
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, do, um, approve of variance.
I'll go second now.
Mayor Protem Cabralis, could you, thank you very much.
So you're doing number A? Did I understand it? In my, before I vote, are we voting on A? That would be A, right? Okay. That's what, just, no, I just, I'll make sure.
Mr. McGlade, is that the, uh, do you want to clarify what A is? No, A is to install, B is the variance.
B is the variance.
Are we clear that it's the variance that we're asking for?
You're asking for the variance.
Oh, that would be D.
Okay. Option A is for us to do it, install the lateral.
That's correct.
Option B is to grant a variance, and option C is for the homeowner to pay for the whole thing.
I got it. We're good. Motion carries with Councilmember Rothschild voting no, and Councilmember Vias absent.
Okay, uh, moving on to agenda item number twenty-four. This is a request to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents, and direct staff to file final arbitrage rebate analysis with IRS.
I have a question, the staff report says that the calculations and tax filings should have been performed when the bond was refunded in two thousand and seven. It also states that the city treasurer was responsible for this. Who, who, who was the treasurer at the time?
At that time, the city treasurer was the daremost.
Okay. And you were, you were over a dare?
No.
Who was over a dare?
The city manager.
The city manager, John Roberts.
Okay.
Now, I, uh, actually haven't, hadn't been over finance until August of two thousand and nine, after Mr. Cox got here.
Okay.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number, uh, twenty-five is a request to consider term lim- term limits for city council members. Uh, this was at the request of Councilwoman Vias.
Yes, um, I had a number of constituents, um, ask me to agendize, um, term limits. I was actually, um, not in favor of making policy or, or governing who people can vote for, but after witnessing firsthand the destruction of, of, um, relationships and how it's become so, um, incestuous as far as relationships go with the city manager or, or, um, the city attorney, and how it has jaded people's decisions, um, council people's decisions to make the right decision for the, for the best interest of the city. So, um, I think in Victorville's case, um, I think term limits would be, would be, uh, necessary. However, then I think, well, maybe the people didn't really know. They really didn't know or understand, um, how bad it was or what was really going on, because, you know, the city hid so much, and the culture here is, is one of, they don't want anyone to know what, what, what's happening. Um, but then I gotta look at the fact that, you know, um, Kennedy put on ballot statement that he was, uh, his wife's Caldwell's partner, and, and he still got voted in. So, with that said, I think that, uh, in this case, um, for the city of Victorville, I think term limits would be necessary.
Before you, I, do you have a card from Sanford Kramer?
Yes, uh, good evening, mayor and city council. Uh, term limits are needed, definitely. We don't need career politicians who are gonna keep, uh, keep on having the city get deeper and deeper and have a name like, uh, the city of Orange, in Orange County, Garden Grove, a long time ago in the seventies, it was called Garbage Grove. It was also a, uh, microterrorist city where, uh, the council and the mayor, all they were interested in is how they can try and get jobs, or do this, or do that, how much money they can make, and all that, and hell with the citizens. Well, anyway, a lot of people got in with some council, uh, members that were elected on city commissions. And with the commissions, we weren't getting paid anything, volunteering our time and everything. We were able to change it around and, uh, get a good council, good election, and keep it to two terms, the four years only. That, because man and woman are always known that, hey, you can start out okay and everything, but greed is there, we're human beings. We have our own personal agendas, but it's not time to do it to the city or to its fat scares. We get people that thrive off and they have nothing else to go back to. They spend thirty-eight years, or fourteen years, or twenty years, getting elected in because they got special interest groups that they can draw a salary from. They have no business to go to or no job. So it's time to limit that, two, four-year terms and everything. Now, very, uh, briefly, the only valid justification of function of any government, that city, uh, city government or anything like that, is protect the rights of life, property, and contract of each individual citizen by objective law and protective force. Nothing more, nothing else. That means police and fire protection, protections for citizens and the property owners. That's it. I noticed we, uh, used to have police coming around locally and everything, and I'd stop and talk to them. We're, we're having more robberies locally, especially getting closer to where I live. We need more police protection. That's what, uh, the government's job is, protect its citizens and its property. Thank you.
All right, yeah?
I'll take it first. Um, I'm gonna support the motion to put the term limits on the, uh, on the ballot, uh, for a totally opposite reason than was articulated. We've had an ex- exceptionally clean and honest council over many, many years, and we have had good service by all of those councils over that year. And they've done an honorable job, and not one of them have been accused of any criminal acts, even as we sit here today. But, and I, and I do believe, I, I, I'm opposed to the term limit, but I do believe that it's a legitimate question, we're a charter city now, so I do believe that it's a legitimate question to put on the ballot, term limits for our council members. That, that should be a policy decision of the citizens of Victorville, not, uh, majority vote on this council. And for my part, I hope the, well, I want the language, my second would be that the language applies to me as well. I mean, uh, if this thing passes in, let's say, the next election cycle here, then I'm not entitled to sit on this council anymore. I've been on here some twenty, oh, by that time, twenty-four years, and I'm proud of the twenty-four years I've served on here. Uh, and anybody else that has, uh, the entire council, no grand following in. The clock starts immediately, so, uh, each of us, and, and those that are the newest on here, including Mr. Kennedy, only gets two terms on the council. Uh, and he's done. Mr. McEckern, if it passes, isn't that time, he'd have one more term on the council, and he's done. So my motion, my second would be that it's two terms, and it applies to all five of us, and, and, uh, that's the end of that story. Like I said, personally, I'm against it, I think we've been well-served by seniority on this council over many years. I can go down a whole list of council members that I've served with, and very proud to have sat next to. Uh, Rudy Cabralis has been our fire chief in sixteen years on this council, and Dean the Bronx is Terry Caldwell, especially, uh, we've been benefi- we've benefited by his service on the council. So, uh, as I sit here, uh, I think it's a, it's a legitimate issue, it'll be a hotly contested issue out there. Uh, people will be arguing both sides of it passionately, and for those that, like this gentleman that just up here, that believe that two, two terms is enough and fine, that's great, but there's a lot of complicated issues that are benefited by the seniority that comes with, uh, many years on the council, if you're, if you're doing a good job. So with that, I, I, I certainly, uh, second the motion, but for a totally different reason.
Was, was there a motion? I, I didn't hear a motion.
Um, I make a, I make a motion to limit council members to two terms, and to be placed on the next ballot.
Well, my amendment would be that it applies to all five of us that are on, currently sitting on here, nobody gets grandfathered in.
Agreed.
Well, we're, we're not through talking about it.
No, 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 we're not even through talking about it, I don't think, three of us have even given our opinion yet. Uh, we do have a second to that motion, correct? Our city clerk?
Yes, if, um, the council members would vote, if you would like to vote on the, the motion.
So if, if we could have the motion official?
The motion is by Councilmember Vias and seconded by Councilmember Rothschild.
And we do need to have continued discussion, I'm sure the rest of us have an opinion on this issue. Councilmember Kennedy?
Well, I happen to think we have a term limit system in this country that's been with us and served us well for two-hundred-and-twenty-five years. It's called an election process, happens every four years. For US congressmen, it happens every two years. When you don't like the one you got, you vote them out, you vote somebody else in. I can't think of anything more undemocratic and more un-American than somebody telling you who you cannot vote for. Uh, it just, that to me is just brain, mind-boggling. Now, I'm gonna take Councilmember Vias's comment, the way I heard it. She really doesn't like this idea, but she thinks in the case of Victorville, you really can't make your own best decisions for yourself, and you need us to impose a two-term, term limit. Term limits exist in, actually, they've been approved in eighteen states. Three of those states have rejected term limits and thrown it out, so it does exist today in fifteen states. That would leave thirty-five states that say, you know, it doesn't make sense. The US government doesn't operate on that principle. My own personal opinion is that the worst thing we ever did in California was bring in term limits. I think you can track the problems we have in this state to the idea that we need to get our people out of state government every six, eight, what is it? Whatever the number is. If we've got somebody good that I want to keep there, sorry, career politician, dirty word, gotta get rid of him. So now we have the Sunday speakers who served two terms, and they probably didn't serve much more than a year when they got elected speaker. We have no leadership in, at the state level. Term limits has been a disaster for the state of California. Now, that's my opinion. I don't mind it going on the ballot, I'll state my position if we have a public election. I think the people of Victorville, and this is an interesting point, uh, I didn't have to put the fact on my ballot statement that my wife is Terry Caldwell's partner. It was a pretty widely-known fact among people in the city of Victorville. It's not something I particularly wanted to hide. Terry Caldwell's been a friend of mine for twenty years. People, my partner, my wife has been his partner for twenty-five years. People of Victorville elected Terry nine different times to the city council. Were they that stupid and that long for that long? And he was consistently the top vote getter every time he ran. Okay, so...
I, that's enough. Ready?
How can I follow? That's great, Jim. But, but yes, and I agree with, with Jim's comments completely, and, uh, I would be against, uh, setting, uh, uh, any term limits. Uh, the people have to decipher themselves, and it's called the electoral process, and so I would accept that, especially for the folk that wave the constitution at us every, every time they come here, with it, you know, it'll show you that. Thank you.
It's good enough for our president.
Well, uh, you know, it's interesting, I would echo some of the comments you made about Sacramento and our, our wonderful state of California. We wouldn't be in the mess we are in today if we didn't have term limits. Uh, the reason that we're in the mess we are in today is because those legislators up in Sacramento kick the can down the road continually, 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 and they don't have to deal with the budget problems. They continue to borrow from future revenues to balance their budgets, to try to figure out what it is that they're gonna do so that they can, you know, get, get all the things that they want done, done. And, uh, so, from my perspective, we continue to have a problem in Sacramento because there's no leadership up there, and there's no one taking control of the decisions that they are making, and because of that, there's no responsibility, uh, when those decisions come to roost. They don't have to live with them, 'cause they won't be there, because we've all voted term limits in, in this, uh, state. And so, uh, I've always been against term limits because of what's gone on in Sacramento. Uh, looking at term limits in the city of Victorville, it's a sexy idea, but ladies and gentlemen, I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the... if it wasn't for the electoral process. Okay? I went out, I got myself elected, I ran against three incumbents, two of them are still sitting here, uh, one of them was unseated. I was successful. Why? Because somehow, some way, I connected with the voters, and they saw a reason to have and make a change. That's how you make changes on city councils. You make changes through the election process. Not through recalls, which I'm completely against, and I think is just so contrary to what we're trying to deal with right now. I've publicly stated that in the newspaper, I'm stating it here tonight. Whatever threat of recall, whether it's real or it's not, it needs to stop. The five of us need to work together to solve the problems of this city. And if you don't like what we're doing up here, guess what? I'm up for reelection next year. I've already stated I'm running for reelection. I wanna be your mayor continually. And if you don't like what I'm doing, then get me out of here. But otherwise, that's how you, that's how you change a city council. So, I don't believe in, in these term limits. I think they're wrong, and I think it's wrong for the city of Victorville. I think it's wrong for the state of California, and I think the only place that it does make sense, although I, I would even argue that, is with the President of the United States. Yes, I will, I will allow speakers. I, I only have just one card on this issue.
I wasn't gonna speak on it, but I'm gonna speak on it. I'm against it. My daughter told me at dinner tonight, when I left at four-thirty, to go home and get a bite to eat. Said it to me best, because I was so upset with you. Tom, don't have anyone's brain that's a citizen of Victorville, that he's been in here for twenty-six years. That's our fault. I don't believe in term limits for our city council. I voted for you, I voted for you, and I voted for you. And if I wanna vote for you twelve years from now, I should have that right. That's my right as a citizen in this town, and I have the right to vote for you in twelve years. I wanna vote for you.
You may not have that right in four years.
I think it's ridiculous. It doesn't need to go on the ballot. It's just gonna cost more money. If we wanna vote somebody off, then the citizens of this community need to pull their heads out and vote for the right people. We don't need, you, there's some of you doing a good job or trying to do a good job, and eight years may not, uh, may not be enough. And for others, it's time to move on. That's how I feel.
All right, so...
There is a motion on the floor by Councilmember Vias and seconded by Councilmember Rothschild to approve, uh, placing the issue of term limits on the ballot. Motion fails with Councilme- Councilmembers Rothschild and Vias voting yes, Mayor McEckern, Mayor Protem Cabralis, and Councilmember Kennedy voting no.
First time I've been happy to lose a vote in my life. As I said before, I'm opposed to it, so...
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Twenty Six. This is a request to adopt resolution number eleven dash zero-one-four entitled, "A Resolution of City Council of the City of Victorville Requesting That the Citizens' Redistricting Commission Recognize the High Desert Communities as a Community of Interest for the Purpose of Redrawing Board of Equalization Congressional and Legislative District Lines." Wow, this just goes back to our last argument.
Well, it just says to send a letter out showing our, our sphere of influence is what it is so we get represented properly. I, I think it's a good idea myself.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, seconded by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Twenty Seven is Discussion and Possible Action on La Mesa-Nesqually Interchange and the Yucco Loma Bridge Project, and Updates on Those Projects. Uh, Mr. Cox?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we have discussed this item, uh, before. At the present time, there is some additional information. Last Friday, the Mountain Desert Division of the League of, of Sandbag, uh, which comprises all the cities in the desert area and the mountains, uh, took up this matter on, uh, that was agendized, and they unanimously recommended that this matter be submitted to the Sandbag Board, and that Sandbag would undertake the La Mesa-Nesqually Interchange and proceed. In the meantime, our staff, and to some extent, Appal Valley staff and the Sandbag staff is negotiating a funding agreement. And, uh, once that matter is, reaches, uh, once that matter is either approved by the Sandbag Board or there's a funding agreement reached, it has to come back to the city council for their approval before anyone can move ahead. At this point in time, there is no guarantee that Sandbag will move ahead on this. But I would want to, I'd like to point out that Sandbag is the transportation agency for San Bernardino County, which is the county in all the cities. It is not a county agency, nor is the county involved in the project. This is Sandbag, which has received the funds for Measure I that, uh, the whole county voted for. And the second thing I'd like to add is, the Measure I funds, which is a half-cent sales tax, is collected throughout the county by the state, distributed back to Sandbag. And Sandbag then determines how to spend that on major projects, interchanges, freeway widenings, um, combined with state and federal funding in the valley areas, a small amount does go back to the cities for maintenance. In the deserts, however, it's totally written differently and affects the cities differently in that most of the Measure I comes directly to the cities. Twenty-five percent of the funding for, uh, the Victor Valley has to be approved by the Major Projects Committee, which is comprised of all the city and the mountains, and the rest of the money then, except, except for the amount used for transit and transit-related, uh, goes to the city for local street projects. In this proposal, actually, what is occurring is Sandbag would handle this the same way, uh, nearly the same way as they handle the projects in the valley. And rather than the city move forward and handle this as a city project, this would move forward to Sandbag. They would handle it as a project that it would still require that the city of Victorville have a funding agreement and pay its share of funds. That share of fund agreement is what's being negotiated now, and as we have additional information, it will be forwarded to the council immediately.
Okay. Well, uh, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Twenty Eight. Uh, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Items for the Upcoming City Council Agenda, and I'll start with, uh, Councilwoman, if I...
Yes, I'd like to, um, request an RFP for a full-service law firm.
No second, so, anything else?
Um, also, um, I keep asking for the policy in the, the, um, council agreed that they wanted, um, the city manager to bring forward a policy for interfund loans. I have yet to see that for approval.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this came up, uh, at the last meeting, and I indicated that, uh, it had been written up as an administrative policy to be signed by the city manager. Um, since that time, it's been a request by Councilwoman Vias to make it a council policy. So we're, uh, changing that form, and, uh, it'll be on the next agenda.
It'll be on the next agenda.
That's it?
Uh, yes, I would like to, uh, get a, an update on the, um, uh, the, um, uh, program for, for the, um, BB five program. Uh, I, I don't think we've heard any information on it, uh, for a while, and I would just like to find out what, what's going on with the appeal.
Well, yeah, we'll put that on the next agenda. I'm good with that.
Yes, I'd like to agendize, um, to, uh, have a letter written to BB and K asking specifically if they are doing any legal work for, uh, Councilwoman Angela Vias. Have that agendized for the next meeting, and have, uh, a signature for the mayor on it. Requesting, they work for both of us in, uh, in one respect, in, uh, the sewer district for the other, but she, her, all of her memos are coming from some legal firm, and I have a feeling that's BB and K. I'd like an official letter requesting that information. Have that agendized for the next one.
Huh? Wait. You're fine with that? All right. So?
Well, why don't you just ask me? Wouldn't that save us time and money? The answer is no. I'm a certified paralegal. I have a master's degree from Pepperdine. Just because I'm a woman doesn't mean I can't write my own little letters.
Well, I have no issue with it. I, I, I would like to know if BB and K is advising you in any way. Um, and I would like them to actually answer the question, although you've answered it here tonight. I seriously think that they are, so, uh, because they work for you over at BBWRA, um, and they also work for the town of Appal Valley. We ought to hear from them, because they also work for us, and we've given them no waivers with respect to representing you. So, as long as they tell us no, then I'm fine. That's my only concern with it. The consensus, is there a majority? I think it was three-two, correct? Mr. Kennedy?
Huh?
Anything else?
No, that's it. Well, I have one concern, and I guess this is the best place to ask. Um, we originally said the red light camera issue would be revisited on May third. I asked that it be postponed to the following meeting, 'cause I won't be here on May third. Uh, that was postponed because at Bill Jensen's request, the Tea Party, the attorney who was working with the Tea Party folks, what was his name?
Brandon Wood.
Brandon Wood. Uh, Bill asked that we give Brandon and the city attorney the opportunity to have discussions, to work on that contract, and see where the problems were, and I guess I'd just like, I'm gonna give us an update on where we are with that, 'cause it's a month away.
I have made numerous attempts, both by email and telephone, to get hold of Brandon Wood, left messages, and I've gotten no response. I've also contacted Mr. Jensen directly to see if I can get a response, and I can't seem to get a response. But I'm not aware of any, uh, and I've been monitoring, I'm not aware of any court decisions yet that have found them unconstitutional. Uh, but if anybody can get Brandon Wood to give me a call.
So the delay was to accomplish this communication.
I can show you the record of the number of times I have tried over the last couple of months to get hold of him. I've talked to, I believe it might have been his wife that was in his office, and said, I get a call back, and I've never received a call back.
So that's gonna be agendized for the May seventeen?
I'll continue to make attempts.
I, I have a question. Since, um, Rothschild brought up the letters, um, does that mean that those letters are now public information since they were brought up in public session? 'Cause I wouldn't mind releasing them.
I didn't know they weren't public.
Okay.
Yeah, if they, if they go to the entire council, they're public immediately, so you can release your letters to us every time you send them. They're completely public, and, um, I didn't realize that, uh, you didn't, you didn't know that they were public, but yeah, they are public, so you can release them.
Okay.
I would encourage you to do so, because, um, I mean, they say case law, there's all kinds of stuff in there, so, um, I know attorneys that don't know case law that well. Um, all right, I have nothing to add on future city council agendas, so at this point, uh, wild reports from council members. I'll start with Councilmember Rothschild.
There's a great new restaurant next to Mimi's over there now. It, I know they've gone through some problems, and some different restaurants have totally failed on that spot. It's Restaurant Row. It's, well, my wife and I spend most of our weeks, uh, meal at least four or five times. Uh, that new restaurant is incredibly well. It's not a normal hamburger. You go in there and try one, you go back and wanna try another one. You have never tasted them quite like these, so go in and give it a shot. Next door to Mimi's.
Freddie?
Fred, yeah.
Freddie's Steakburger.
How soon I forget?
Very good.
Been there twice already.
Can you tell nothing? I have nothing. Thank you all. We're adjourned.